Standing. Please rise, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Meeting in the Wahoo City Council Tuesday, June fourteenth is stated its flag day today, seven o'clock PM. Open Meetings Act is posted on the wall. If you have any other questions, there are other brochures that have more detail back at the office. Call a meeting of order and roll call.
Stuart Creachey?
Here.
Carl Warford?
Here.
Karen Booth?
Here.
Pat Nagel?
Here.
Chris Rappel?
Here.
Brian Ideas?
Here.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wants to make comments on something that's not on the agenda? Bill?
Bill Reese, I hope that the city will have representation at the open house and town hall meetings regarding Saunders County Comprehensive Plan. I don't know if you've been invited or not, but I think it's real important that the municipalities have a strong representation there so they're aware of what Marvin Associates are up to.
Thank you.
With your side. I have information that I'll share with you when I give my report.
Yes, I mean, yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Sally?
I'm trying to read the notes here, so just give us a little. But just, it's not, I have comments on items not listed on the agenda, the progress on the camel center.
Okay.
I know what it is, it's the building. And that's not on the agenda.
Okay, there's.
I just read your.
About the camel pole.
That was, that was myself.
Oh, okay. He stepped out, said, well, wait a minute, you're gonna.
He's got too many projects in his.
Appreciate it, ma'am.
Okay. Mother watching out, okay. Thank you, anybody else? Okay, we'll move ahead. Department head reports start over on my left. Kevin?
Just real quickly, pool's been open now today, eighteenth day average attendance thus far through yesterday was about two hundred and sixty-eight, so a good summer. Pool season so far, almost three weeks into it, things have been running fairly smoothly. Just something to put on your radar, Hackberry new addition, phase three. All of the improvements we've made over the last twelve, thirteen months, we're getting very close to starting to use that a little bit. Probably see some activity on those fields next week and weekend. To some extent, we're trying to kind of ease into it a little bit. The grass isn't quite there, but it's getting a lot better to the point where we feel comfortable letting some use on it. So there will be a formal ceremonial ribbon cutting at some point in the near future, maybe as early as next week, so look for that information in your emails sent out, probably funnel that through the chamber office, to have them send that out to the business community and to, and to you folks. So that's all I got.
Okay, Joe?
The street department has been out pretty busy with street repairs and storm sewer repairs. Right now, we're actually working on Fort in Orange. I know you guys have probably seen that tore up by the pool. What we did there is we rebuilt a storm inlet box and were redoing the streets where all those little cave-ins and washouts were at, at the bottom of Fort in Orange. We recently repaired a storm inlet lead at Hackberry Park parking lot. We've been doing a lot of work out at the Greenwood Cemetery. We straightened the fence, cleaned the fence up, painted it. We're working on putting up a Greenwood entry sign. It's still in the works. We're not a hundred percent sure on what we're gonna do yet, but we have a pretty good idea. We're excited to get that done. Twenty-third and Hackberry, we had a storm drained, it was washed out. On the west side of Hackberry, we brought about fifteen truckloads of dirt in there and dressed that all up. And mosquito controls to start mid-June. We're probably gonna get our first spray probably towards the end of the week, weather permitting. And then we got the London and Beach overlay projects going on there in progress. JEO's doing a great job overseeing Collins Construction out there. Everything's going well. Give them props for taking time and doing a really good job so far. Other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you. Travis?
I'm thinking monthly reports in there. Still very busy with items there going on with that. Couple new houses came in yet, progress with other ones going on. Scooters has started, footings have been forward, little stimwales have been forward. So you'll see electricians moving in there, getting some conduit in, plumbers getting the rough-in groundwork done. So that's proceeding forward. Couple other items are, are on here on the agenda coming up and I think that's about it for now.
I'm getting a lot, quite a few questions. What's their target date to be operative on scooters?
The contractor told me August.
August, no?
Yep, so I don't know, mid-August, end of August, I don't know, he just said August. So I'm getting fairly quick turnaround on that. So, this is one other thing that I can't think of right now.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
Well, besides what's there in the monthly report, we also got, we're finishing up a background check on a person that's interested in the records clerk position, which hopefully will alleviate a lot of the paperwork that we're doing and tying this up a lot, get us out there on the street more. And then we also got a person that actually Thursday's going out to Grand Island to test for an open police officer position that's still, still available. So as David said, he hopefully will be bringing him on soon. Right now, in the meantime, we've been having Courtney Collins, our part-time officer, coming out filling in some of the shifts for us, but that's kind of what's been going on with the police department. Got any questions?
Okay, Denise, couple in the building, her report is in here, you can read through that. Any questions from the department heads at all? Probably should have asked that after each one, but I think they've given a report. We discussed in a street committee this morning, or before the council meeting, Joe brought up how much do we want each time? Maybe every, not everybody do it same night, but maybe every six, eight weeks. A little more detail, and your detail of what you're doing maybe would be appropriate, but but I, Joe's was fine tonight, hit the bullet points, so. Okay, move on to the.
Can I report?
Yeah. I was going through them, I had my name down.
Okay, so the repairs on the Lake Wahoohoo Trail, there's a couple places where there's, the grade is gonna be built back up and the trail repaired. That's actually has resumed. The birding survey revealed the nest that was kind of holding things up is no longer active, so that's positive news. As Joe mentioned, the street improvement and asphalt overlay work is progressing very nicely. Today I got notice that Eleventh and Beach is open, and they moved to Ninth and Beach today, so now Eighth, Ninth and Tenth and Beach on westbound, traffic is closed. One thing we've been able to do with this project that I'm hoping keeps people informed is we've actually had some people respond with their email addresses so that every time I've been made aware of some sort of project change, I've been able to send out a email blast to everyone, and I think you're all on that email. So that seems to be working well. I believe that the water work is gonna be starting possibly next week, fingers crossed. And with that Eleventh and Beach done, they'll be able to start at the north end of Eleventh and London and work their way south as was planned. Bill Reese mentioned this Saunders County Comprehensive Plan 2022. If you, at home, you probably got a postcard like this in the mail. This QR code on the back actually gives you, with your phone, you can link to do the survey. If any of you want the specific list of open houses, there's three next week, the twentieth, twenty-first and twenty-second. They're in Prague, Uten and out at the ARDC Extension Center, and they're both from one to four during the day and six to nine in the evening. So again, like Bill said, I would encourage you, if you have time, to go out and participate. I am gonna be attending one of them as city administrator. We did have a presentation or sort of review with the street committee of the north area drainage study that JEO was working on. And I think they got some questions answered by this, that the street committee had, but we are doing an open house next Wednesday from five to seven here at the library. It will be a come and go as you, you know, as works for you, but we have sent specific invitations out to those property owners that are in that area that are potentially impacted by, that have had questions about the project. So it's open to the public. If you want to attend, you're more than welcome. We will have a follow-up presentation at the council on those study results. Just wanted to give the property owners the opportunity to have some of those questions answered directly before we get to the full public meeting. It's kind of a, I don't know whether that's the right way to go about it, but you're welcome to attend the open house as well. The guardrail project that was kind of, that was led at the same time as the trail on the work, I think that Joe indicated that's moving along well, and then they're gonna be working on the drainage improvements on the east side of Chestnut Street, south side of the Wahoo Creek Bridge. North Highlands, we did, we had a progress update meeting last week in the sanitary sewer is complete. They are working on the storm sewer and the water connections, and they hope by the end of the month, they'll have paving underway. We've been spending some time at those update meetings coordinating how the natural gas is gonna be installed and electricity, and so even though you're gonna see a street paved, there's some of that work that still has to be done before you're gonna see actual basements go in the ground. And then we have job openings. I encourage you, if you know of anyone who's looking for a job, they're all listed on the city's website. Under the job openings at the top right of the page, we've tried to share that as much as we can. We've run some ads in the Wahoo newspaper, Market Weekly. I think there must be a lot of job openings out there for people to apply for. And lastly, we continue to work on nuisances, addressing dead trees, grass that needs to be mowed, and then other property nuisances that need to be addressed. And it's, it's the typical cycle that we go through in the summertime, so any questions on anything?
Thank you.
You didn't have a narrow.
Now we'll go to the consent agenda. Four items on there, all pretty much traditional. Any questions on the?
Final payout?
For the last year's.
Last year's.
Intersectional curve. Motion to approve.
Motion made in second to approve consent agenda. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Creachey?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing and associated action items. Number one, replat of lots ten, eleven and twelve in the east eighty-four and a half feet of block thirteen, block one, Stockton Second Edition. Wahoo Saunders County, Nebraska into two lots. Does anyone want to speak to that before we open the hearing?
Maybe Travis?
Travis?
So Karen had called me. She was the surveyor for this project. She had some vehicle trouble, so she wasn't gonna be able to be here, but she is the one that did the survey on the property for the replat. Basically what's in front of you, down on C Street, we have three, I think it's three and a partial lots that is one owner, they're wanting to reconfigure those lots into basically two, two lots rather than the three and apart. When I looked at it, it is currently zoned transitional ag. I spoke with Jovan about that when they applied for that to see about a zoning change, if that was necessary. We come to the agreement that since it's not making it more non-conforming, it's already an undersized parcel, actually it's bettering the existence because it's actually making the lots bigger. So we didn't need to go through a zoning change on that as far as more non-conformancy. Is in the flood plain. They do plan on building, from what I understand, they hope to build a couple new houses down there. It's from a family member that they're getting it from, and the planning commission did recommend approval of that. There's no improvements necessary. Like I said, it's already a platted area. Utilities are there, so there isn't any road work or anything else like that that's being done. The only reason why it's really being a replat rather than administratively is just that it involves three, three lots rather than one lot that we're creating two or whatnot, so. The owner, the current owner is here. I don't know if you got any questions for him or if he wants to add anything to that.
What it is, is I inherited the ground. My two sons want to build on it. So there's three acres there. We're trying to split it up so they can each have some and build houses on it. That's all we're trying to do.
With that, I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone from the public want to speak to this replat of these lots? Seeing no one, I'll ask second time. Anybody want to speak in the public hearing regarding the replat? Again, seeing none.
Motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion in second to close the public hearing. Roll call on closing the hearing.
Warford?
Yes.
Creachey?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Okay, council discussion on the issue before you, the replating of these lots.
Just seems more administrative, just clean it up. More power to them. Motion to approve.
Second. Several seconds.
I got one.
I made a motion to waive the three reasons.
Okay.
Doesn't take an ordinance, so.
Okay, alright.
Oh yeah, let's see. So we can.
I will just add to, with Karen not being here, she will have the actual stamped Mylar and everything designed, so everything will be legit. I think maybe the cop that we had in there has the signature bars and stuff on it, but she was planning on bringing all that tonight, but.
So we'll have to do that, but it is, it is stamped, okay. Motion in second to approve the replat. Is there any more discussion? Roll call.
Creachey?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Booth? Yes.
Okay, old untabled items, consideration, a recommendation from the planning commission and possible approval of third reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three. Melissa attended the meeting, I did, that is, other than I, so.
Yeah, so at the, at the planning commission, you guys sent this back to the planning commission, and it was really presented to them with one of two options, either a recommendation of denial or a recommendation that come forward with changes to the language. And you'll see from the minutes of the planning commission, what's highlighted in your packet in the pink or light purple is the recommendation that came forward. We spent a lot of time, not we, the planning commission spent a lot of time, we actually had visual aid on the table that had an aerial image with lots of properties marked out on it, and we went through specifically marking out those areas that would not be impacted by a change, and this that you have in your packet is a visual representation of what was left that would be eligible for a ground floor residential apartment if it was facing these areas, so the blackout line, if that makes any sense. So the, the planning commission eliminated the reference to a condominium. They added that it'd be a multi-story property. They added that it is adjacent and facing to R1, R2 or R3, and they eliminated reference to NRC. They also specifically excluded properties facing Chestnut Maple, Broadway, London and Fifth and Sixth Streets. So again, the result of the eligible areas would be those that are in, in black here, so. I did not prepare, we did not prepare an ordinance, but the language that you had in there previously said condominiums and apartments, ground floor condominiums and apartments, and properties located adjacent to NRC, R1, R2, R3 zoning districts, excluding properties located on Chestnut and Fifth Streets. So that's how they changed the language. If you would decide you want to move forward with the ordinance, it would be, I guess I would say this is the language that you would want to consider.
Did you mention the conditional use?
Right, this is, this would be only as a conditional use. It would not be permitted, it would be a conditional use, and so if this is just opening it up an option, a conditional use application would have to come forward to you for consideration if you allow this amendment to take place in the zoning regulations.
So what information is provided to a potential applicant with regard to what those conditional uses might be before they jump through the hoops, as it were, to get their conditional use proven approved? So like, to me, I guess, and not speaker for everyone, but like one of the conditional uses that I would consider would be parking, right? That has to be an issue with additional units would, would need to provide additional parking, so is there stuff like that that we set ahead? That that would be provided to somebody before they decide they wanted to try to move forward with a, a conditional use, or?
I think a point was made in the planning commission meeting, Bill, that the parking regulations are already in place, and so as staff, we should be able to take those, that they're pretty black and white, and say, you know, as part of your conditional use, you should be able to meet the existing regulations. You shouldn't have to ask for a waiver to the parking regulations. And as staff, that's our job to make sure that those applications that come to you actually do meet those black and white specifications that are spelled out in the zoning regulations. If that, does that answer your question?
The, I wasn't sure until I got the packet and when I read it again tonight. At least that we'd have discussion about the change. It's a lot to soak up in one meeting. And I'm not sure how much time and, and who is responsible, who first has the responsibility to talk about the conditional uses? Is it the planning and zoning, or is it the council recommending?
So if, if this, if this passes and it is allowed as a conditional use, the applicant would submit a conditional use, there's going to be a public hearing at the planning commission, and the planning commission would then make a recommendation on that actual application. Once that recommendation has been made, which they have to make within, I believe it's thirty days of, of the public hearing, it comes to the city council for a public hearing and then official actions where you officially set any additional conditions.
Can the planning commission set conditions as well?
They could recommend.
I mean, recommend.
Right.
So to us, we wouldn't, we wouldn't probably take it all the way tonight.
So there, at this point, there's been no application for a conditional use?
Right.
Or filed, so this would be just the step one. If, if a party was interested in having ground floor apartments that meet these qualifications, they would have to come forward with a conditional use application.
But as to this ordinance to set the process, that could be tonight, if, if the council's ready.
We would go with a third reading, but not a final?
Third would be the final, so you could act right now if you wanted to. With amended language? Yes. In the place. Yeah, presumably, if you're going to approve it, you're gonna approve it with either the modified language as recommended or something similar to that.
The one thing I'd like to say is, at the planning and zoning, Mr. Sullivan, who's asking for this amendment to the zoning rights, did mention maybe possibly adding to it like fifty percent of the ground floor should be reserved for commercial use, but then still allowing half of the ground floor. I, you know, in talking with some of the people on zoning, they would like to see at least us to consider that option, is to add that language to the same language that's there. I mean, it wasn't somebody else's idea, it was proposed by the person seeking the change to the, to the zoning amendment should be added, so. I'm just bringing it up to see what other people on the council feel on that situation.
Personally, I still feel like that's something that can be taken as part of the conditional use application if a specific project would require something like that. I guess I'm less inclined to tie our hands any further. You know, if we're.
To put that actually.
We just need to put that in there when, you know, it depends on, on a, a specific project, which we don't have, so. I don't know, like I said, I, I guess I've said such at the beginning, anything we can do to open ourselves up and not tie our own hands sometimes, I think would be better to get out of our own way, so. I would, I would prefer to see it as written, but that's just my opinion.
I don't want to see more ground being taken away from commercial use.
And again, to me, that's.
Because I don't want, I don't want to put that as a condition and then all of a sudden they have to change their entire project. So if it's in there beforehand, they know coming in, I gotta try to reserve part of my ground floor for commercial use, whereas if they plan on doing it all residential, then we say, well, one of your conditions is it's gonna be fifty percent, now all of a sudden they gotta redo their entire plan, so it would be better for a builder to know upfront that part of it has to be set aside for commercial use instead of after the fact.
That makes sense to me.
Any other discussion? Anybody from planning and zoning want to comment on anything? It's been explained, but.
I guess one thing worth attention for something, I kind of agree with, I draw the line.
Carl?
Carl. When they, when they go for the conditional use permit, begin with the project, that is part of it, but also with the outline. So if you have a whole block, then you have maybe two sides of it facing residential or two sides of it facing commercial. So you're kind of splitting a little bit, comparing that project. So if every, one side is facing commercial, it can have a purpose anyway, the other side facing rain. So whichever side is facing or the difference, that's one side has a purpose. The other side of the property has to be commercial.
Why not just cross it off and resume it then, if that's what the intent is to build apartments?
Well, I think what happens with this though is we're protecting the face of the, the commercial area by protecting Fifth, Broadway and those areas, and those areas that are facing or adjacent to, what were the? R1, R2 or R3? R1, R2 or R3 are probably not destined for commercial the way downtown sits. And I, I would reiterate that the conditional use application requires the developer or whoever to provide drawings, plans, all kinds of contingencies with that application. And the, the commission can recommend any type of restriction or anything that they feel is necessary to protect the intent of the ordinance. And the council has the same authority, so if you want to impose, if, if the parking doesn't look good to the council, then you can recommend, or future councils can recommend what parking would be acceptable. You know, so it's a, you're, you're kind of working with the developer in the best interest. It's not one person's ideas. It's kind of a joint effort, and I think that's when everybody wins, is that there's a little more thought going into it. And I appreciate the fifty percent, but I think it can also lock into what future development could look like as well, so I think. I, I would suggest that you kind of look at it on a case-by-case basis. So I think, I, I would suggest that you kind of look at it on a case-by-case basis. I really don't know that we're going to have, um, a, a huge number of people wanting to build apartments in those things, so I think you can be real selective in how that looks. And I, I, I think it boils down to trusting, uh, future boards and commissions to do their work.
Yeah, I just, I feel like if we tie, we put a number on it, we say it's fifty percent, and, uh, we get in our own way, because then we get a project that comes in, it looks really good, and as it's mapped out, we end up with sixty percent that's residential in this really nice two commercial bays, and all of a sudden, well, we can't do that anymore, because now we have a whole zoning regulation change we have to make because we put it in here, and we start from the beginning. So again, to me, as much as we can stay out of our way to not have to do that and approve a project on an individual basis, makes more sense to me than putting other things in our own way.
Well, I'm just saying, if he comes, if he comes in, it's all residential, we don't like that. Now all of a sudden, we're saying, well, sorry, go change your whole design. I, you know, I'm, you know.
Just give us some development.
And, you know, I just don't want to make extra work for somebody if they've already put a bunch of plans together, and all of a sudden, last minute, we don't like this anymore, change it. Are they going to want to do it, or are they going to just pull out and say, forget it, it's not worth it anymore? It's not trying to stop anybody, it's just trying to save some of that commercial, because we're limited on how much commercial we have. It's, downtown's not going to grow, C one's not going to get any bigger. So if we get rid of all of it because, in these areas, and those are the areas that somebody could build a restaurant or a small boutique again, you know, we take away those options now by not putting that language in, we just limit the commercial development that can happen in downtown. Because even with the project, if it's partially got some apartments on the ground floor and above, it may spur other development also, still in the downtown area.
Well, I can't speak for the developer, but, uh, the one that's been presenting this is here, and he's been at all of the meetings, including the meeting, uh, the special meeting. I, I think we could say that we are recommending that some commercial be on the ground floor, and maybe not put in a hard number, um, that, that they have to live by. Uh, we've thrown out fifty percent, I, if that's a, not a vote, but a general consensus that in that area would be acceptable. Maybe you can give him a little bit of guidance, but.
I would think his developers are inquiring.
That would be some guidance we would, we would also provide.
Yeah.
Say, you know, we would like to see some commercial be a part of your plan, and it's pretty unreasonable to think that if you come up with something that it's only going to be ten percent or twenty percent, I mean, it generally is going to fit and, you know, take up a significant percentage, whether it's a third or half or whatever, but I kind of agree with Carl in that, you know, you put a hard and fast number, then you're always trying to drive to that, where if there's a little flexibility, I think, I think you're still going to have projects that probably fit and look good, but, um, might be forty percent commercial, or might be sixty percent.
Where we allow for the creativity of the developer.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Sullivan, any comments or thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think a, a successful developer will take those, those considerations, um, into the overall success of the project, you know, whether you hammer on a percentage of residential to commercial. Um, I, I do think it'll bottleneck you a little, the reason I brought that up at the last special meeting was to just add vocabulary of options, um, that would help Wahoo find that balance of, of new development by shaking it up a little bit, and I think the committee, um, kind of channeled more towards, um, the kind of transitional areas, uh, you know, excluding Chestnut, Fifth, Sixth, Broadway, Maple, um, and then, you know, focusing on those adjacent and facing areas. So I think that was a way to, you know, still make sure that we're getting, uh, a little bit of both, um, commercial on those streets, and then, you know, allowing if someone applies and goes through this process to potentially do residential on the, in those areas. So, yeah, I was just trying, the last special meeting, I was trying to put together some actual vocabulary, uh, that made sense, that was proper, uh, for Wahoo, uh, to take, uh, giant steps forward, uh, in this process, and I think, uh, I'm pretty happy about the last meeting, I think it was very successful, and I, I liked the collaboration, so, um, you know, again, I'm still open to continuing the collaboration wherever that avenue may go, but, um, you know, I'm hoping we can kind of continue forward in this process.
Any other comments from the council, or?
I guess the only comments I have is that, you know, I've, I've driven around other towns, and I know Elkhorn has got some projects, they've got apartments that they have just constructed in their downtown, so if, you know, if, if you, if you're out and driving around, it's, it's worth driving down there. Um, I, I believe they've got in two different locations, they're three and four-story apartments that are facing their, their business district, and it gives it a, a whole different look. Um, I struggle with that, because I, I really don't agree with that. Um, because you're right, when the commercial is gone, it's gone. Um, so, I don't know, I, there's been a lot of, a lot of people spend a lot of time on this thing, so it's, it's, it's got a lot of, a lot of angles to it.
And I see that in Lincoln, they have, there's a number of areas where they have the, well, it's commercial all on the first level, and then it's apartment buildings, and they're, I don't know, districts or something, and they're very beautiful buildings. I don't know about their future, but they're beautiful apartment buildings with all, looks like all commercial on the first level.
It is, Lincoln, Lincoln says it's commercial, a hundred percent, there's no chance of an apartment right now downtown, Lincoln, on the ground floor.
Well, not the last meeting, we'd, we'd asked the, uh, the planning commission to put together a language that we could look at and, and go over, and I know that they worked with, uh, others here, as well as with Mike, and I appreciate them putting something forward that we can look at today.
Yes.
Can I, Jovan, in terms of.
Yeah.
Uh, ways to move forward, is, can they adopt an amendment to the language of the existing ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
And then either proceed with the final reading, or table the final reading until the next meeting?
Yeah, there's.
Kind of, what are the options that they have?
Yeah, there's basically three things. One, you get a motion, a second to table it, uh, within and before that is done, there's some general instruction on what type of ordinance language you want to see the city integrate into a, a ordinance for your next council meeting. The second option would be a motion, a second to approve it, subject to amended language. The third would be no action, which would kill the ordinance, and it would come off your agenda.
Not saying we're ready to vote yet, but.
One, one question I've had kind of all along, you know, uh, conditional uses, um, generally, you know, we talk about, we reapprove them annually, every couple of years, whatever, we continually reapprove these. Being, when it becomes a residence, uh, as an approved area like that, what does it look like if some, somewhere down the line, we're saying, well, we don't want that to be conditional use residential anymore, we want to turn it commercial, um, as far as laws regarding, you know, eviction, or whatever that would require, that we'd want to go down that road, but what would that look like?
Yeah, there'd be two things in my mind. One would be, it would not be my general recommendation to approve a conditional use permit of this type, subject to some sort of sunset or renewal, because an individual has invested funds with the understanding of it, it being used for that, that intent and purpose, right? Um, if you did that, there, I think it also opens the door to a potential inverse condemnation claim, a claim that, look, I undertook this project, I put money into this project, I developed residential structures, and it's designed as such, which disqualifies it potentially for being used as a commercial structure, because it doesn't meet all the requirements for commercial structure, and then if you later tell me I have to use it for, as a commercial structure, potentially I've been harmed, and that may be constitute an inverse condemnation claim. So I, I think from a, a CUP standpoint, this is not an area where we could put a timetable on it. I think if there's some degree of finality, it would have to, have to occur. And that for a person to change it, I think obviously our language would allow them to, to convert it from residential to commercial on their own voluntarily, right? Um, but the reverse, to go from something that's an existing commercial to residential will require the permit. Um, and once the permit's issued, to stay residential, I don't think requires anything.
From administratively, from the conditions that I would envision with this would be, let's say, for instance, you have a corner where it faces, I'll say in this instance, Fifth Street, and it also faces, um.
Beach.
Beach Street, right?
Okay.
A condition you could put on that is that you do not want a residence facing Fifth Street, or facing Beach Street right on the corner, you want to have the commercial go all the way and wrap around, so that you have a street corner that is, looks like commercial, and then residential behind it. That would be a condition you could put in place. Or you want to say, we want the structure to be designed such that the for ground level is, uh, has a ceiling clearance enough that it would be conducive for, to commercial space. It's not going to come in with eight-foot ceilings on the ground floor, because in reality, it'll probably never get converted to commercial property, right? So those are, in my opinion, those are conditions that you could put in place.
It's kind of how I've seen it as well, is that those spaces would be built as something that could one day be conducive to commercial, and that they would need to be set with those specifications in mind, that, that it would be able to be converted at some point, um, with those, um, regulations and things like that in mind, as, as those spaces, not as a typical residential home, apartment, again, would.
Or maybe that's where the fifty percent comes in, you know, that those, half of them have to be built so they're easily transitioned to commercial, the other half can be traditionally residential.
Yeah, I'm certainly not against conditional use permits, I think the one thing that would be helpful, and, and you brought the point up at the beginning of this, Carl, which is to say, oftentimes practically speaking, what happens is a person comes in and they say, give me an idea, or do I have any chance of getting a conditional use permit here, right? And so then it inherently falls on Travis and Melissa's shoulders to say, well, I think you might, or I think you won't, and here are the things that council is concerned about. So it doesn't necessarily have to be prescribed issues, but I think that the more you guys talk about this, the more you indicate what your concerns are, the more informed Travis and Melissa would be, and, and your future staff as to what you're looking for if you are going to consider approving a conditional use permit.
That was my concern to, to his point, is, you know, you don't want somebody putting a bunch of investment into it and coming forward, and be like, well, that's not at all what we were thinking for this conditional use, and then it just gets like denied. So to have some kind of, you know, these are the conditions we expect to set forth on something like that, to be laid out for people before they apply for something, um, so as not to waste developers' time and money.
An individual property owner that has a house, and they don't keep it up, and it gets out of condition, filthy, terrible conditions. If a commercial, like not a commercial, a series of apartments, story, two, thirty stories high, the, the only people that would come in and act on that would be the state? Or would we have any?
Yeah, I mean, we would have unsafe building in or nuisance authorities if it, if it rose to that level.
Okay.
The one thing, if Travis and, and staff have talked about in the past, there's a, a series of life safety codes that also could be enacted, which would give a little bit broader authority to the city to deal with those, I'll call it uninhabitable type situations, where it's not unsafe, but it's in uninhabitable state.
Yeah.
It's just, not to, to pick on Travis, he's got twenty things to deal with, so to, to start down that path of what would that look like, and, and add that project, I think has been too much probably to take on at this point, but that's the thing that potentially would be out there.
So we'd still have some authority there, but if we institute a policy or ordinance to allow them.
Yeah. When I've discussed the topic with individuals, the comment that seems to come up as a concern with first-floor apartments are the fact that, you know, if you're in a first-floor apartment, where do you have to sit up, hang out, whatever, or even a second-floor apartment, where do you have? And the concern I hear is, you know, it'd be too bad to see, you know, twenty bicycles, four grills, lawn chairs, everything sitting out front, and not look very kept up, and that wouldn't be maybe a good look for the outer edge of downtown. And I could see that, and I was trying to think of how a conditional use permit could help mitigate.
Maybe there wouldn't be any loft on the second floor facing where the commercial is, or something.
Yeah.
Can I say? Okay. So I've just been hearing just a, a mirage of different concerns, which is great, I think that's appropriate for the city to be concerned. So just a couple of thoughts, just listening. First of all, we've got a developer here that was a homegrown in Wahoo, so he knows, he knows Wahoo better than I do, I'm sure he's been in every nook and cranny that I haven't been in, but someone who also has been an asset manager, when you talk about safety, bicycles and things like that, so his job was to go in to apartments around the United States and assess them if, if they were, um, up to snuff to purchase, and if they were, for this company, what needs to be done to bring them to the safety standards of, of purchasing them to make them look nice, and these were nice apartments. So it's always been safety first, and I, I may know, I can speak this for the developer, uh, in our family too, it's always been safety first, um, uh, to, to, um, to everything. So that's really top priority for him. He's also, and, and he won't pat himself on the shoulder or tell you this, but he's an architect as well, even though he's hired an architect to do these plans, he's also an architect. He's worked construction since he was in junior high, so he knows how to build things, he knows how things work, he, he knows how, what safety standards are, um, he even for a stint worked for Habitat for Humanity in Omaha, and he would train people how, how to build things and, and do it in a safe manner. So these are all things that you don't know about his background, but I can, I can tell you that, he's not going to tell you. So he's got the best interests of the town. The second thing I wanted to mention is that it seems like there's a bottleneck here, and that's what you have with, right before you have a bloom of progress, is you've got to get through that bottleneck, and that's what I'm hearing and seeing, and once you do that, you'll be pleasantly surprised at other developments, maybe not from this developer, that will take place in Wahoo, and they go, look what Wahoo is doing, look what a great decision they've made, and you may not agree on every little iota of the decision, but look what they're doing, let's step it up. And you'll have other store owners, you'll have other maybe developers, and I see Wahoo's, um, growing towards Chestnut as far as commercial. Um, and there's, when you drive around, there are buildings that could be renovated and updated in that respect too. So I hear you're concerned about, um, the commercial end of it, and I totally understand that, but in order to make a more lively, prosperous downtown, you need people down here too, and that would be on the residential side of downtown, and in a, you know, I, I can't say whether you're going to say commercial or not for that, or what percentage, or, or let's see the plan and go from there, that's even an option too, let's just see what the developer's plan is, and see what the commercial plan is on it, or the potential, or maybe add another building, you know? I, I don't know all these things, because I don't know what the plan is, I don't think anybody here actually knows the, the, the look of it all too, but that's my thought. When I moved from place to place, I think probably fourteen times, I always looked for a park, and so to build a residential apartments near a park, that's, that's an attraction, that's what people are going to look for, it's like, oh, I can go read a book, oh, there's a playground, um, there's activity, there's a swimming pool, there's a civic center right there. Those are hugely important for people to live near those, those things, and those people bring money to the shops then, um, no matter what shop it, it is, you know? Hairstylists, barbers, um, we've got a meat market that's awesome down the street, and you name it, and then there could be more businesses that come in, it's like, okay, here's the population, it's grown in the downtown, let's, let's do this business. That's all I have to say, is that.
Thank you. Thank you.
I hope that helps.
Appreciate the background. And this is probably one of the first major projects like this that this community has worked on, I would say that. We've had other major projects, but they follow the former pattern or something. So, okay. Does the council have more questions, or do you want to try amendment, or motion to move table man?
Everybody's waiting. I would make the motion to approve as written here.
I'll second that.
We're approving what, the amendment?
As, as they, as approved, or as rewritten by the planning commission.
So you're approving the ordinance subject to that amendment? Because the ordinance, technically, the ordinance presented at the third reading was the original one.
Okay.
But so you're approving the ordinance subject to the amendment.
Subject to the changes that the planning commission recommended.
That's what I seconded.
That's what you seconded.
Whatever he said.
Okay. You got most of it, we can make sure we get it right.
Make that work right.
Right.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Any other questions on the motion as seconded, as amended and seconded, before a call for roll call? Seeing none, roll call.
Warford?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Cretchi?
No.
Nagel?
No.
Rappel?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
So you got four, two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's just an amendment, it's still in the process. That's just an amendment.
That was our third reading.
That's just add the amendment to it.
No, that's the ordinance as amended. So now, the ordinance is in, will take effect after the publication process. The only thing that is remaining is if you do ever approve any conditional use permits, right?
Right.
If maybe language just stays there, there's never a project, because there's not a conditional use permit. That would depend on that individual application, which has to come to you.
So that's where we're going now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's just ever so, like the storage units, that's going to depend.
Okay. Action not requiring a public hearing. Number one, resolution to authorize the placement of no parking signs along the east and west sides of Drive Run Drive.
Drive Run Drive is located adjacent to Casey's, and there have been semis using that as overnight parking. So we need, there's also some concerns with the condition of the paving in that location. So if you are out there, you will see that that has actually been barricaded. You can get into the diesel pump area on the south side of Casey's, but you can't go south of there. So those signs would be placed along both sides of Drive Run Drive.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Motion and second to approve resolution. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Cretchi?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Discussion item is not requiring action determination if it, if it is in the best interest of the city to relocate sidewalk easement to the, to a utility easement between North Locust and North Sycamore Streets. This deals with an easement that's already there, right?
Yeah, so do you want to get it?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's the difference?
Okay.
Yeah. I couldn't read it.
Yeah.
So, in your packets, there's actually two final plats. The first is for the original Sycamore Hills subdivision, and with that subdivision, you'll see there was a twenty-foot easement that was allocated between lots sixteen and fifteen that was intended to be a sidewalk easement. There's an extensive distance between Sixteenth Street and Twenty-third Street for pedestrian access between Sycamore and Locust. So the idea when this final plat was put in place is that that would be an easement. We go to Sycamore Hills First Edition. That easement was extended. It looks a little bit different on the final plat, but it is an extension of that, actually completing the connection all the way over to Sycamore Street. With Sycamore Hills First Edition, there was actually, in that easement as well, an installation of a sanitary sewer line. So that is not only a sidewalks, sidewalk easement, but it's also a utility easement. In your packets, there are some photos of, actually, this, this image shows you where that sanitary sewer line is. And so the easement itself is something that we need to retain. The sanitary sewer, these manholes, the flow lines are actually very deep. If there was ever the, a reason for the city to need to go in and either do a repair or replacement of this, there would be dirt that would need to be dug up in order to get to the depth of where the pipe is. And then this last page, there's the images. If you drove by this location, you see it's actually pretty steep, looking down and then looking up. Joe, with the street department, actually did get some estimates. He got three, talked to three contractors. One said they would install a straight sidewalk down the hill for ten grand. The other one said it would be roughly thirty-seven thousand dollars to install the sidewalk with stairs and take it down to Sycamore Street. And the other one said, we're not interested in doing the work at all because of the liability. So there's some safety concerns in that area if you put a sidewalk in. And so beyond that, this, this is put on the agenda mostly for discussion and for you to sort of give us some direction on moving forward. Just to eliminate the word sidewalk from the easement and make it clear to the property owners that we're not moving forward on that. If you would decide to move forward, I would, I have not reached out to budding property owners. I feel like it would be necessary to have that conversation with them, invite them to participate in the conversation. I also have talked to the developer of Sycamore Hills, just the J E O, and asked whether they had any thoughts on whether this was acceptable to vacate this sidewalk easement, or take the sidewalk away from the easement. And they didn't have any issues with that. So, I'm there, I'll let you.
Well, when the plat was being developed, I know that the safety concern was to move, move children up to this high school. And I think since then, the trails have come, or, what's the alternatives? I mean, we were trying to go faster.
Up to Twenty-third.
Yeah, go up to Twenty-third.
Down and then back.
About a block and a half extra.
Add a two-walk, walk to them.
Or cut across the neighbor's yards.
I was going to tell you, right now, I will tell you that eighty-five, ninety percent of the traffic that goes back there to Sycamore will walk through the yards. Write down either that easement, or, yeah, my yard. Or they go down the other side of my neighbor to the north between Simons and my, don't know the neighbor's name, but... So there's the house just to the south of me, and there's a tree line that runs between Simons' house and his house. And they either walk down that, or they walk down my yard, because those fences were left open for this specific sidewalk. The, you'll see the two down here, this guy, these two put their fences in short to have that sidewalk put in. So some, some kids will walk through there. I don't know, I've been expecting sidewalks since, since we moved there. I, I do believe that kids will continue to find a way to walk through there. Again, I won't vote on this particular topic, but I'd like to see a sidewalk, but I also understand the concerns of the grade. You know, if it's, if it runs straight through, you're riding a bike or whatever, and you're going right down a hill into a T-intersection, shooting out into the street, that seems dangerous.
Yeah.
And sidewalks are just a mess. Right. And if the sidewalks are all going to be skateboarding off the sidewalk.
Yeah, and you're skating.
If you do put steps in there, I was concerned about that.
If they put steps, they're going to be wrapping off the steps, you're riding a skateboard off of them anyway, so. Neither one of those options seems overly exciting to me.
What is the, what is the flow, do you estimate through there a day, number of people walking through them?
Between there and the other side, there's twenty, twenty-five kids right now. I mean, everybody that lives on Sycamore.
Gets up there.
Up and down there.
There's a lot of kids.
Yeah.
It's all kids.
And if they go down here, they could run into this electrical.
Yeah, well, the sidewalk would probably come in right, right out or right next to that, but then it's, you know, a short shot from there right out into the street, which is pretty scary.
Yeah, or crash into there and knock their heads loose.
Sounds like we need a fire hydrant right there.
That'll slow them down.
Give it another obstacle to aim for.
Right.
I mean, you already got a traffic pattern established. How do you, how do you help them without having to?
That's just, I love to cross it. I was wondering, and I guess I thought, maybe there's, there's not another easement on the other side over there, or is that just utility easement as well? For some reason, I thought there was something else on the other side of Simons right there.
On the north side of Simons?
Yeah, north side of Simons, south side of the other one, because I know that there was a big strip of grass that wasn't planted, and I guess I thought there was an easement there as well. And maybe that one wasn't.
So it was a vacated street.
Yeah, that is a vacated street. Yeah.
Nothing that could be used there to put a sidewalk in. I just, I'd love to see them have a way, especially, you know, with the new sidewalk that was put in to get down to the elementary, for them to get there. Because sure, we can't expect them to walk around, but they're not willing to.
Yeah, right.
They're, they're just not.
So if we go to utility easements, we're just, we're grass. It could just be grass, and the city would have no further obligation.
Right.
If it's utility easement.
Right.
Then it's done. If we stay sidewalk, then we need to dug grass.
I put fences in one way or another, and that's where I was trying to go. If they're not going to put the sidewalk in, my fence will run through, and they won't be able to go through there anymore.
But you couldn't put a fence across if it's a utility.
I can just put the understanding of they're made out.
It almost looks like the developer owns it.
Down here, put a fence across there. That the city puts in like a four-foot fence.
It's a vacation.
That's again, they, they either have a fence to get over.
To the city of, of the area. Here, the city owns the easement. So if we get rid of the easement, who owns the property?
Where the fences are down here, you just put a fence back there between.
Oh, yeah.
Fence it off.
That's my, that's my law, so that's what I would be doing.
It seems to suggest that it's city-owned.
The city puts it there, so that way.
I'd take care of that.
It takes care of the.
My thought is, I just take the water. As you can see all the footpath, I mean, you really see the foot traffic in the winter.
Because it was a process for you selling it, vacating it, or if neither do I. Because if it's a drop, then we'd.
I expected to do it, and then when they said steps, I'm not trying to.
Because I really don't want to have to go down there and scoop and put ice melt on steps all the time.
I was like, if it's just a sidewalk, I got a snowboard, I can deal with that pretty quick.
But I also understood his concern when he said, it's pretty steep, and you don't need anybody, you know, some younger kids especially, riding bikes to school or something, and walking down that.
I know we spent a lot of time and effort doing trails all the way around the place, and then it'd be nice to keep a trail going if the elevation was a little more friendly.
You can't put steps all the way, because they're not going to push their bike up with steps. All those steps to slow down.
How wide is that?
The total easement is twenty feet.
Twenty feet.
One on toward the end, or more of a curve, slow down a little bit?
Side to side, serpentine.
No, it's not even down at the end, there's.
It's in the middle.
There's three significant drops that go through there on the way down.
You curve it, you slow down a little bit.
You have one path.
I had to do that in the old one, the school.
For sure, yeah.
The other issue is, if we, if we cut the grades, it's natural grades.
Right.
If you raise the grade, you're going to shut it towards a property, your property. And then you're going to have washouts, and it's going to hit your fence.
Yeah.
Then if we, if we take it down lower, it's going to be an ice rink going all the way down. So I could grab dick to the middle of that trench. So we talked about, I kind of talked to J E O.
Well, what you found there was what?
Which is a possibility, you know, we would just have, it wouldn't be, you could landscape it and sag it where it really slowed you down. But kids are kids, they're going to.
You're still going to have a grade issue there.
They're right now, they're sure.
Now you're going to worry so late, you're really skateboarding.
The one thing, I was just talking to these guys, is that I think I need a little time to look at this, because my concern is, normally, let's say that that was a publicly dedicated road or alley or otherwise. We then, as a city, would we, we say, we don't need it anymore. We would record a utility easement to make sure we're protecting their utility rights. And then we would either sell that above-surface ingress, egress, and use to one of the property owners, or we would voluntarily vacate it, where half goes to one property owner, half goes to the other, right? Or if, let's say, it's owned by someone, and we simply want to amend our easement rights, we would record an amendment to the easement rights, and the property owner just is left with now the, the ability to own the above-surface. I'm not clear right here who owns the above-surface though, because it looks like the lot lines for the two adjacent property owners end at this twenty feet. So, and so if I were to speculate based on this, the developer actually still owns that twenty feet, subject to our easement rights.
Off of Locust, and off of Sycamore, it looks like.
My pins run all the way to the corner, so the whole twenty feet on, on the Locust side is, is supposed to be my property. And then down here, they each run to the middle and had to give up ten feet of their lot to the easement. That's how it was always understood.
And that could be the case, it's just, and I'm just looking at the plat drawing. The plat drawing doesn't show that. Like, so if you're looking at the packet, I don't know if you guys have that.
Yeah, I saw the packet showing a gap there, which is not the way it was in my.
Yeah, that's the issue. Page twenty-four, like, if you look at the, the area, which I think that's Luke Simons' area you talked about before, that's what, you know, a vacation looks like, where the, that area extends into the person's property lines, right? That's not how this plat shows that. So I'm just, I think we'd need to clarify before we got rid of an easement right, what that means to, who owns it, who has the right to it or otherwise.
Trying to remember. Admittedly, I pulled this from our documents on our public drive. I didn't actually go to our dedication file in the cabinet, and maybe this is a point that's been clarified. Travis, does that ring a bell to you?
I can't remember. I know the one on the east side of Sycamore is actually designated as public right-of-way.
On the, on the east side of Sycamore, yes.
Yes. The one running by Wolford, I am not sure. I was under the understanding that there was not. It was just a sidewalk easement. I don't know if it really had public right.
And that's listed just as the easement, but it doesn't show the property line in the middle of that easement, which is what it would, I would think would show, right? Would show this lot ends here, this lot ends here. The easement is shown and described above those lots, but.
And again, my understanding on that one wasn't a split like it is on Sycamore. Down there, they split it on the upper side, though, when we got on the lot, it was, we have the whole, that, the whole twenty feet was ours, so. That's all my sprinklers, and my maintenance has been over there for the last twelve years, so.
Would really like to explore a way to keep it concreted or something. Because you, you can't have a trail all the way up to Sycamore, and you've got a high school on the other side.
And then they got to go two blocks down to come around.
They're not going to do that. I think we need to try to explore a way to.
With that vacated, that vacated street, is there anything that can be done, anything that can be used there to put sidewalk in? Is the grade any different over there?
Now, since it's been vacated, in order for us to do anything in that area, we would have to reacquire and pay for easement rights, or whatever we would, we would do. And the reason, the only reason I ask about who owns it is because if we get rid of the easement, the above-ground easement, right? That then creates the question of, hey, in order to prevent people from walking up and down, I would assume the property owners are going to want to extend the fence out to close it off, right? That would be the common sense. But unless they, we clarify, can they do that? Because do they own that area? Then I think that we'd, we'd want to shore that up, because I'm sure the question would come to Travis, when somebody's wanting to build a fence or extend the fence line or something.
Right, like a couple of days after this is done.
Yeah.
I've been waiting to put a fence in for three years. Do I stop short? Where do I need to stop short?
Yeah.
How do, you know?
Yeah.
If the city does own it, you want to keep the sweat off for drainage. And you also want to keep it as a refinding between the high school and auxiliary streets, Sycamore, Locust, and Centra. I mean, could you actually make it as like a hiking trail, like you do in the mountains? It's, it's controlled by the rec center, Parks and Rec. You make a gravel or wood chip kind of path that's not concrete, and it has some forgiveness to little kiddos. And also you can do, you know, wood steps, like six-by-six blocks or something like that, that you see in the mountains. That helps with, you know, that way down from elevation. So is there a way, if the city does own it, do you want to keep it as an access point, that you can find a middle ground that's not a sidewalk, but still a way to place a block? You can also add a buffer as a park, or some sort of thing, to kind of muffle the speed.
I think some type of material would work as long as the erosion wouldn't carry away.
Sounds like we've got a great. Rock chips, anything like that's gonna wash away. So there's two, two pretty steep spots. One right between the properties of the of the east and west property line, and then uh one frankly in the middle of my yard. Take care of that someday.
Well, I think we're not sure what we wanna do after we know what we can do. That's what it amounts to. So I guess I would say uh we can't make a determination tonight. My recommendation would be that we hold it off till the first meeting in July. Gives us time to think through this a little bit more, determine what we can do with the property that we own or don't own that have easements on.
Yeah, I mean, optimally, if if you don't wanna retain any above ground rights, we would just amend the easement and we don't have any part of anything to do, right? I just wanna make sure that that's all that's necessary. We don't have to go through a vacation, we don't have to go through a transfer of ownership, we don't have to do any of that stuff as well. And I, based on what you said, that sounds like that's the case, but I'm probably.
I'm relatively certain, but I'll be shocked to find out what's different.
They'll be good to find out, yeah.
So we get a motion to table till.
No action, no discussion.
I think the city can just put it on the agenda formally when you think you're ready to pack over.
Okay.
The only thing I would comment would be, um, I had a high school math teacher. I don't remember too much from high school, cause that was sixty years ago, but he um always captured my attention. And the one thing that he said is, if you want, that I'll never forget anyway, if you want people to walk on the sidewalk, then you build the sidewalk where the people walk.
That's right.
And that's my bit of wisdom.
Said, I I I've expected it, I've invited it, I've brought it up several times, and I would love to see it go in because I know that there's traffic there. But I also think, you know, if it's not safe, then it's not safe, and I'll reclaim my right.
So we cannot determine.
It's your yard.
So we will place.
I've done a lot of loading there over the years.
You're gonna see about five or six more people walking through here.
Sorry, you jogging up it.
We'll move on, uh, I don't have any comments on anything that's not on the agenda. Council members, do you have anything that's not on the agenda that you wanna comment on or bring up on?
Yeah, I do.
Yes.
Um, last September of twenty twenty-one, I went to this uh Balarne Annual Conference. And one of the topics was creative districts. Um, and and with this, you would learn how to structure a creative district and be informed about state grant, state grant funds available to municipalities with creative districts. And I, I told the, let's see, the Wahoo Chamber about it and another gal artist, you know, I told her, we gotta do this, we gotta find out about this. And then last week, I opened the newspaper and Ashland was named first creative district in the state. And I'm totally bummed.
So what did they create, a district?
They've created a district.
Okay.
But I want one.
I've never heard of that, yeah, it says creative districts are designated districts for cultural and economic areas where innovation flourishes and neighborhoods come together in the name of art.
There you go, right there.
No, I heard words, but I don't know what those mean.
I feel, I feel like.
Art means. How you interpret it?
Yeah, you know, close to.
I feel like.
I think that's something that is legislatively was something new that was enacted that I think this last legislative session, and I think it actually allows them to tap into some different pools of money.
Yes, they, they got ten thousand dollars initially, and then they're gonna do. And they're gonna go do a whole lot of other stuff.
Yeah, you, it looks like geographically designated area in your city that is the district. And then after you've created the district, then you allocate economic resources for art projects, basically, that you wanna see happen in those, in that district.
Yeah, can we do this?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, anybody that's.
That's true.
The question, of course, is what? How formal or informal does it require in terms of, unfortunately, like, when we create overlay districts, that usually means a lot of engineering and all that kinda stuff, and it's expensive. Here, do you guys think that's necessary? Or ought maybe the planning commission talk about where that district might be located and just kinda get the discussion started?
Yeah, we could have a building downtown, move out the rough guy and look where his building, that'd be a perfect spot.
You do it like Lincoln and have art projects that go in downtown.
Cause I mean, would it be like, you have it run down Fifth Street and it would allow you to repaint a mural on the Eagles building or do, you know?
Mm-hmm. Sculptures on the, on the owners.
Any other discussion? The entertaining motion to adjourn. All in favor, stand.